Calling to order the Audit Committee meeting for December the 8th. Looking around, we, it looks like we have a quorum. Let's start with an invocation. Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this, this cool crisp day and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and govern ourselves and help us as we make decisions today that affect our neighbors and the citizens of this county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but guide us and be sure our actions are based on truth and fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with all its full respect, one nation, God, and his will, every deed, justice for all.
Thank you. Chairman Duncan is not with us today, but we do have a quorum and would like for gentlemen to give me an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. And do we have any changes to our agenda today?
Amen.
Thank you very much. Let's go right into, let's see, our report. John and Rick, come on up and tell us who you've been spying on this quarter. There's a nervous, they nervously laugh when you come up here.
Our, our two victims this quarter were Human Resources and the Fleet Services. It's okay with me, but we usually have the agenda on this, the screens, and right now it's doing something else. So, starting with HR. You'll have the HR report there in your packets. I'm going to kind of skip ahead to page four where you'll see a section called inquiries and observations, where we'll start with Human Resources. We, we asked a lot of questions and made some observations and we were able to make a recommendation in regards to perhaps moving towards a more paperless system, improving reporting capabilities, integration with the Human Resources, record keeping and munis. Couple of recommendations there and on page four below our recommendations, you can see more importantly, management's responses. So, some discussions there about moving away again from, from so much paper. They have a, a large vault full of paper records. It may be possible to reduce that by going more paperless. Moving on, we, you can see on page five, we actually reviewed personnel files. We took a look at 15 county employees haphazardly, randomly selected, and five constitutional officers, staff members. We examined each file to see that it contained an I-9 form, a drug testing consent form, a driving record consent form, background checks, and we found no issues in any of those files that we observed. We also looked at benefits, benefits for current employees, benefits for current contract employees, and benefits for retired employees where that's applicable. For the current employees, we actually looked at the same 15 folks that we looked at, their personnel files, and we reviewed their benefit enrollment forms and items like that. There are some benefits extended to retirees. We also obtained a list of those retirees and looked at the enrollment forms and made sure that all those benefits were in order and that the correct amounts were being charged by those, or to those, those retirees. And we also looked at contract employee benefits. We obtained a list of contract employees, selected five of those and verified that the contract was in the personnel file and that the employment contract was appropriate and included the benefits. So, we had no issues, no exceptions noted in our review of benefits. Like we do in every department, we looked at purchase card transactions. We noted no exceptions with that. We also looked at purchase requisitions slash purchase orders. You see that on page eight and no, no issues there. We also reviewed time sheets in the way that we always do with all departments. We noted no exceptions, but just, just a note, the county has changed banks this, this, beginning of this fiscal year and as a result, that bank does not provide what we previously referred to as direct deposit report. You'll see in the background and in the testing section. We have used those deposits, those direct deposit reports to trace individual direct deposits for our selected employees all the way to deposit into their bank accounts. And we were not able to do that for one of the two payrolls that we selected, the one payroll that came after the change of banks. Now, I was able to trace that individual, the individual employees' pay back to the payroll report and the sum total of the payroll report declaring the bank statement, but just wanted to let everyone know that the procedure that we have previously agreed upon and we've been doing for several years cannot be done exactly the same way with the current bank records.
How do you plan on going forward to test those?
Questions on that.
Yeah. Well, that's a good question. So, the, I would like to note first of all that we've never, to my knowledge, in all of our years, actually had an incorrect amount that was direct deposited. But the way that we do these procedures, they're previously agreed upon and everyone, you all basically know what we're going to do and so we don't deviate without discussing it first. And so, I'm not certain that the loss of that direct deposit report is necessarily significant, has a significant impact in our ability to, to get to a comfort level with our time sheet testing. And as I mentioned, I can still trace the amounts to the total report and the report to the bank.
So, you're saying it's not that you couldn't do it, it's just that it deviates from the plan?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
So, there, there was a higher level of detail, granular detail, in a report that we've always referred to as the direct deposit report we've gotten in the past and with the current banking arrangement, we just don't seem to have that same report.
Not have the ability to do that.
I will check on that.
If, if we could get them to provide us with the same report, we can continue to do it the way we used to do.
I think we can.
I, I can't imagine they can't provide that.
Okay. So, it may be just a matter of a little follow-up on that, but at the, when doing these, these two departments, we were unable to do that, that step. So, we also looked at the workers' compensation policy. We obtained a copy of the policy for the calendar year 2020, verified that the, the policy was active and, and that everything looked appropriate with that. We did a petty cash count, a surprise, a surprise cash count on November 19th and noted no exceptions in the petty cash fund. And then, the, I wasn't even aware of this, but there are certain aspects of the Federal Transit Administration compliant drug and alcohol program that have to be done in person. So, there's a GDOT onsite monitoring that happens annually and we, we obtained the 2020 monitoring report and noted no significant issues with that. Like I said, I wasn't even aware of that. That was, I didn't know this was a Georgia Department of Transportation annual report, but I took a look at it and didn't have any issues. So, that's, everything for the HR department. Any questions?
Have we looked into updating maybe the system for maybe to get paper and all of that?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we're, we're already looking at that and Marsha. Yeah. But we're already moving in that direction, yes.
We have to go back to scan. Are we scanning stuff as we down?
Yeah, with the, from the things that we selected, with the current records, all of that was scanned and very easy to, to find. I think there were a couple of older things we requested that might've had to require going off-site to go find.
Retention, right.
So, and that's, that's a normal challenge. I think HR is sort of a paperwork intensive department, being compliance oriented.
What is the retention for our?
It's, it's a while. It, it, I guess, hands on the actual record itself. Some of them I think we keep forever.
Forever.
Some of them are.
I was wondering.
Or, you know, they, they cycle off, but.
Somewhere back there, you got Billy's first paycheck stuff.
That's one of those.
That's dust. It's on stone.
The papyrus.
Papyrus.
Thank you.
All right. So, we can move on to the Fleet Services. One thing I, I didn't get to mention when I started, I'd like you to mention, this time around, due to some scheduling snafus, I got to go out in the field myself, which I enjoyed and got a chance to. I always like to, to meet county employees. The county is very fortunate to have some good quality folks on the front lines. And so, for a guy that kind of likes cars and stuff, it was fun going to Fleet Services. And so, we do have the Fleet Services report here for you, for your review. So, first thing on page four, you'll see is we looked at deposits. We, we obtained a general ledger detail of revenues, selected a variety of deposits and traced them through the receipt of funds form where they were taken to the finance department and to the validated deposit slip. It slips and we noted no exceptions when working on that. We also looked at other government agencies' work orders. So, this is when Harlem, Columbia County Community Connections, Columbia County Cares, the Department of Forestry, other agencies come to Columbia County Fleet Services to have their maintenance performed. We requested a list of those work orders and tested them for several different attributes and we noted no exceptions when testing those. And by the way, some of those led to the deposits that were discussed directly above there. So, we, we've looked at all sides of, of that work and found no issues there. Now, when the Fleet Department does maintenance or repairs on Columbia County's vehicles, there's no deposit associated with that, but there is a work order which is used to track the, the maintenance or the repair and to charge the correct department for that. So, we, we looked at several of the work orders, asked a lot of questions and really sort of delved into the work order process. We reviewed several of them. We noted no exceptions in that testing. There's multiple attributes which you'll see in the, the report. You'll see a list of attributes we tested and didn't find any issues with that. We looked at purchase requisitions. After obtaining a list of purchase orders, we reviewed those and didn't find any issues with that. And we looked at purchase card transactions. Now, on page seven, you will see the purchase card transaction testing. When we're testing purchase card transactions, we do test the purchase thresholds, just like we do with purchase orders. And so, there were a few instances where we made some notes. For instance, there was a, a purchase over $2,000 for a generator controller. We did not see multiple quotes for that and so we inquired about, about that. According to management, it is a, a unique situation and something of an emergency event. That controller was only available from one vendor and, which makes sense. And we recommend that that be documented in munis to avoid questions about that. There were also two invoices over $2,000 where we didn't see quotes in addition to the generator controller. Management explained that those were sole sources, which again appeared reasonable in the circumstances. However, it was not documented in munis. And so, we made the recommendation that there be a more consistent application of the documentation of emergency purchases or sole source purchases because we did see that documented in other, in other instances. And management has replied to that recommendation within the report. We also took a look at time sheets and same circumstance as with, with the HR department. We've looked at two, two pay periods, one with the old bank where we were able to go to the direct deposit report and one with the new bank where we were not able to do that. Incidentally, it was the same payroll report so that that same large dollar amount was traced declaring the bank. We looked at the annual fleet reports and this was a little more interesting. You'll see some, some, some charts in the report today. The annual fleet reports are maintained not just for, they, they come from the fuel man cards, the information comes from fuel man cards, but it's not just about fuel. They maintain these fleet reports to keep an eye on when vehicles in the fleet may need to be replaced. They have a target for the number of miles they're going to put on each vehicle. So, there's, there's a lot of information in those reports, but I wanted to crunch the numbers and come up with something interesting to share with you. So, according to those reports, over the three years that I looked at for this, for today, I looked at 2017, 18 and 19, the total miles driven were over 8 million miles, which I think will get you to the moon and back multiple times. But, over 8 million miles each year and on average, fuel cost is over a million dollars, 1.3 million. But the cost per mile has actually been declining over time. In 2014, because we have, we have records going back for several years, we've done this for a few years, 2014, it was 35 cents per mile. Currently, it's closer to 17 cents per mile. So, I think that's a combination of lower fuel costs and improved efficiency as newer vehicles in the fleet are more efficient. So, the, there are a couple of graphs in there to, to show you the decrease in the cost per mile and how it's kind of leveling out and so, some interesting stuff there. We also looked, that, so that, as I mentioned, comes from the fuel man cards information. We also looked at the miscellaneous fuel man cards and traced those back to the, the documentation when they were requested. So, as I'm sure all, all of you know, there's a fuel man card associated with each vehicle, but in addition to that, there are circumstances, like if you need to put gas in a lawnmower, for instance, the law, the lawnmower doesn't have a fuel man card, so you have to get a miscellaneous fuel man card to, to do that. And there are other circumstances when you might need to do something like that. And that, that process is maintained or managed by the Fleet Services. We selected several of those and traced them back to the documentation of the issuance of that card and didn't have any issues. So, that's Fleet Services. Any, any questions about Fleet Services?
No, sir. Do you have any other recommendations for us?
With the Fleet Services?
Or on any of, any of the audits on the reports?
Now, all of our recommendations are included in the reports and like I mentioned earlier, I did get the opportunity to go out in the field this time and, and really enjoyed interacting with, with, with county personnel. I think the county is really lucky to have some good people working for it. So, the, no, no recommendations beyond those we've already included in the reports for these two departments. And with that, I'll go ahead and mention to you the things that are kind of on the, on the horizon here going into the next quarter. On the three-year rotation, we're looking at emergency management, risk management, rental facilities and community events. All four of those have come around on a three-year anniversary. We are looking at issuing a new lodging tax report shortly and we have one that's already almost complete and we have selected some other hotels. We've, we didn't talk about that last quarter, about two quarters ago, we, I think we discussed that. And also, on the three-year rotation is the Board of Elections, which I think we'll leave them alone a little bit longer, but at some point, when things settle down, they'll be due for an internal audit as well. Those are the things we're working on currently.
Do you think maybe the Board of Elections will be second quarter?
I think that would be.
Break. They had a lot of audits lately.
Yeah, they've been.
The, yes, I, I think probably second quarter. I've got, I've got a schedule made up for the first quarter and I, I don't plan to be in the Board of Elections during that period of time, but by, by June, I think we could probably have a Board of Elections report that would cover some of the, this period of time and so, yes. But I, I don't plan to be in the Board of Elections anytime between now and the runoff and hopefully the runoff won't lead to a recount and.
Amen.
Yes.
So, that was, that was the, for internal audit?
Yes.
And fiscal year 2019, 2020 audit results summary. How that?
External, external audit.
The other, the other CPA, sorry. Thank you, John. Thank you, Rick.
Hi, good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Speaking of paperless, I had my backup presentation here. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to see the presentation. I am Bonnie Cox and I do serve as your external audit partner with Cherry Becker. And today, we are going to talk about the results of the fiscal year ended 2020, June 30, 2020, for those financial statement audit results. Go ahead and flip to the next one. So, this slide is just a reminder of what is management's responsibility here at the county when it comes to the financial statements and the audit. So, the accounting policies that are sound and appropriate for the county, the internal controls that surround those financial reportings, that, these are all management's responsibilities to, to, to make sure those financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles. That is the responsibility of your management. If your management were aware of any known internal control deficiencies or any known fraud, it would be management's responsibilities to bring that up to our attention as the auditor. So, the auditor's responsibility is for us to plan and execute on audit, on the audit procedures, to ensure that those, the reasonable assurance, not absolute, we talk about this, we don't test 100% of, of transactions, but that those financial statements are free of material misstatement. The auditor responsibility is also to express an opinion on those financial statements, to, to state that. And then, our responsibility is also to communicate with you, the body of governance, the Audit Committee, those significant items that were noted during the course of our audit. And so, that's what we're doing today. This slide here, you will see bulleted points of required communications as a part of those audit results. If you were to look in note one of your financial statements, then you would see the explanation of your significant accounting policies. You would also see that they are the same as last year. There were no new accounting standards that had to be implemented. I'm sure Leanne was right before that circumstance in this fiscal year. No new required standards to be, so everything's the same compared to the prior year. Significant accounting estimates, I'm required to bring those to your attention just because we design our audit procedures differently for testing those. You heard a lot about testing receipts and transactions and invoices. Estimates are just different because they require judgment on management's part. And so, you can see here the list of those significant accounting estimates. The allowance for doubtful accounts, what receivables may or may not be collected across the entire county. How long your capital assets will be useful, so how many years you're carrying that depreciation on those capital assets. That's a judgment of your management. The landfill post-closure cost, that also requires estimate of management. Your investments are carried at fair value and fair value is also an estimate of those amounts that are recorded. And then, your post-employment benefits liabilities, you are well aware the county does not have pension plan, but you do have what's called the OPEB plan, those post-employment benefits liabilities that flow into the line items, deferred inflows and outflows. So, those are the significant estimates that are in your financial statements. So, this slide here, what you will see, you will see a lot of green check marks and a lot of the word "no," but in external financial results, those are positive things. So, there were not any unusual transactions or difficult to, to audit transactions for which there was not appropriate guidance. We did not have any difficulties encountering the audit, even though Leanne tried to create this little knee issue right here at the end. We still were able to get here on, on the, the timeline. She did a great job helping us still get here as planned. We did not have any disagreements. If we had disagreements with your management during the course of the audit about any accounting treatment or audit treatment, then we would bring that to your attention. To our knowledge, your management is not consulting with other independent accountants. You just heard from your internal auditor, but by definition in a government, internal audit is a management function, so they are not independent. But if we were aware that your management were talking to other independent auditors, I would bring that to your attention. And there were no audit adjustments. Everything was expected, no findings and, and nothing there. So, there were not any issues which your management talked with us prior to retaining us. They did not say, "Well, if we were to do this, what would your audit opinion be?" If that were the case, I would bring that to your attention. All the proposed adjustments were just in the, the normal course of the year-end close. Your management does all of those. They give us all the information for that, for the year-end close and all those have been reflected in the records of the county. Cherry Becker has remained independent as auditors must do and your management is going to give to us a written, signed representation letter that tells us that they were truthful in all of our inquiries and did not withhold any information that would have been relevant, either to our audit procedures or to the financial statements either way. So, at the end of the day, what do you get? So, we are anticipate issuing an unmodified report on the financial statements there. We also will issue a clean report on compliance with laws and regulations under government auditing standards, which if internal controls related to financial reporting in regards to laws and regulations there. And then, we also will again this year, issue a clean opinion on uniform grant guidance. If you recall, some years you have spent more federal funds that require this additional compliance audit. Past couple of years, it's been some DOT funds. This year, it was the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which we'll talk about that in just a second, but that also will get a report this year. And then, these required communications. You'll get a letter that I signed that will basically detail out in a lot of words these things that we're talking about today. In addition, these are the countywide statements. In addition, we also, for you, there is a landfill report that's separate, specific to the landfill. There's a library report that's specific and required for the library. The Board of Health gets a standalone report and those all have been, I guess last year was the first year for the library, but, but in previous years, we've issued those other. And this year, the Development Authority also will have a separate standalone report because of the business needs, the Development Authority there. All right. I mentioned your expenditures of federal awards. The Coronavirus Relief Fund is the fund that we tested this year. I will say that the, the legislature did not do accounting people any favors in the dates in which they passed certain things. And so, we did have to walk down an exercise of when it was appropriate to recognize the revenue from those grant funds. And I will just say that the Carl Vincent Institute of Governments, which is out of the University of Georgia, while it is not authoritative guidance like GASB, they did issue some clarifying guidance of how to interpret what the state of Georgia did and how that applies to GASB. That did give us some, some logical revenue recognition that your management followed there. So, that is, was impacted this year. And then, again, no compliance findings at all. We did have, you just heard a Human Resources internal audit report. We did have one recommendation to your Human Resources Department that just relates to the dates when county employees transfer departments, that if you would align that with payroll dates and only transfer at the cutoff dates of the payroll periods, it would decrease any, any potential problem of having to void some checks and, and do that sort of thing. So, just seemed a, a logical recommendation there, just to align any of those transfers with the payroll cutoff dates to, to make things a little bit simpler on the internal controls there.
Let me just add there that, that is our normal procedure. We had an isolated instance, I believe it was one.
It was one. We, we, we only test a handful and so the way we find those needles in the haystack, I'm not sure, but.
Amazing. But that is the typical, typically, we, we do it that way. That, that's, that's our goal.
We found the, the one voided check this year that.
I'm glad. Glad you found it.
Yes. Okay, COVID-19. So, the impact to the audit, I will just tell you, you know, Cherry Becker, we're a national firm and on March 16th, our firm took 1,200 employees and went 100% remote in a 24-hour period. And we did that out of safeguarding the health of our employees and of our clients. I will say that our firm headquarters are in Richmond, Virginia, and our CEO's office is in Raleigh, North Carolina. And so, as we have returned to our workplace and transformed our workplace as a firm, we have followed some of the, we kind of go to the lowest common denominator, right? So, we have followed a very conservative approach of safeguarding our people. So we have followed a very conservative approach of safeguarding our people and our clients. And so right now, what, um, our teams are doing, we still, if our employees would like to go to office or go to the client locations, we certainly, um, allow them to do that at their comfort level. Reason I bring this up is because it impacts your management, um, and I just am very grateful for how flexible they were with allowing our people to conduct our audit testing, um, either combining being on site, but also doing that remotely. And so very grateful for how your management helped us to do that, and we're still here on time, which that is also, um, a significant accomplishment of them working with us to get through that. For the actual audit testing, we did, um, test the, I mentioned the Corona Relief Fund, which was new to this year, and in the reporting, um, your finance team had to add a, a non-major special revenue fund to track those expenditures and that revenue, and so if you pay attention to page 100 and whatever in the, in the report, you would see a new fund there that'll be, um, that'll show up, that'll have the activity there, and will probably, it'll still have carryover into '21, um, as well. Next year, um, so the lease standard, we've talked about this for a long time, I will say that GASB and FASB, both on the commercial side and on the government side, because of the COVID pandemic, they did delay implementation for some standards, um, to fiscal '22, but again, that's a beginning of the year impact, this is going to have a significant impact there. Leanne and her team are already looking at it, this is something that we've recommended to, to explore, um, software purchases that are going to be required to implement this standard in regards to the lease calculations, very similar if you think about your depreciation calculations of your capital assets, um, which you have to have a software to track and, and calculate that depreciation, very similar for your leases as that standard, um, becomes required to be implemented in '22, in the fiscal '22, but it'll have to be fiscal '21 to gather all that information so that, to be ready for that '22 implementation. We'll pause and ask if any of you have any questions.
I think you pretty much covered it. A lot, and you did it quick. Very good, very good.
You have my email and my phone number there, um, I, you know, this is the formal communication of the audit results, but I also work with your management, but you guys are my clients, so if you ever have any questions or concerns, then please reach out, I'd be happy to talk with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a lot of information we just got from several different sources. What, um, do we have any comments? All right, having none, and I have no, nothing for executive session for this committee. Um, Mr. Johnson, anything to add?
No ma'am.
Any public comment? Right, being none, we will adjourn this meeting and come back in two minutes for the, um, Calling to order the, um, Management and Internal Services Committee meeting for December 8th. We have already prayed and pledged, we have a quorum here, missing one, but we have two, um, need approval for the minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
So moved. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Out of my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Yes, agenda's approved and we'll move on down. I don't have any presentations or, um, any items for the consent agenda, we'll move directly into debate. New business, Mr. Johnson, do you have items for us?
Thank you, ma'am. The first item you have for your consideration is a service agreement with child enrichment. Uh, this is a total of $2,000, uh, from the Commissioner discretionary funds, and staff recommends approval of the service agreement.
Moved to consent.
So moved. Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, the next item will be presented by Mr. Granato.
Madam Chair, how is everyone?
Good.
Okay, so this is for the, uh, bid 2020-037, bid 1313 for the portable generators. You may recall, this is part of the overall grant that we're getting from FEMA for Hurricane, uh, yeah, Hurricane Irma. Um, we put this to bid on November 19th, 2020, seven bids came in, the lowest two, um, did not meet the standard, um, minimum specifications. Um, the evaluation you have is attached, the lowest bidder meeting specifications was JNT Service Center Incorporated in the amount of $523,260. Our local share, uh, of that is going to be $78,489. Um, staff recommends a Board of Commissioners award, um, bid 1313, um, portable generator JNT Services Center Incorporated in the amount of $523,260. Again, our local share for this project is $78,489.
Moved to consent.
So moved. Anything else?
No ma'am.
Thank you. And technology services, you're not Michael Blanchard. Tell us what you have, are you going to spend money like Michael does? Okay, let's, let's hear it. What you got? What you got this morning?
Okay, um, my name is Sean McGarroll, I'm the IT manager, um, I'm presenting this for Mr. Blanchard. Um, in, uh, October of 2017, the county, uh, renewed our agreement with Vision Technology Solutions for the county website and the services that, uh, that we, uh, utilize with them. Five months later, in February of 2018, uh, Vision was acquired by Granicus Solutions. Uh, so, uh, we have continued our agreement with them over the last couple of years. When our renewal, uh, came available this summer, Granicus asked us to update the agreement to reflect their name instead of Vision, since Vision was no longer this, uh, our vendor of support. So, um, so what we are doing is presenting this, asking that, uh, this, uh, excuse me, this assumption agreement that, uh, we can get this updated until the end of the contract, which, uh, ends in 2022, at the end of the fifth year. Uh, the, the annual cost this year is $22,822, and as with most of our support agreements, it, uh, increases by about 5% each year.
What specifically does this technology do for our website?
Uh, our website is hosted with Granicus in their cloud data center, uh, and it also, we use their, um, their, uh, content management solution, which allows our users to update the webpage without having to have any formal website programming type of experience.
Moved to consent.
So moved. Do you have anything else for us today, Sean?
No ma'am.
Apparently, this was a cheap day. All right, um, do we have anything else, Mr. Johnson, under?
I don't believe so.
Do we have any legal matters? Um, all right, let's move right into staff reports.
First staff report, here are informations, our personnel savings year to date, uh, you can see that we've already saved significant money, total being $499,592, and, uh, we continue to, uh, struggle filling positions, but, um, we're on our way.
Accepted as information, year-to-date budget report?
That is perfect. You're like Elvis.
First report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report, um, this is the month ended November 30th, we should be operating around 42%. As is customary, I have listed several of the major funds on the rec sheet for year to date, operating.
And this last update?
Last update, we have collected money, month of October, that check was one of our largest checks to date, almost 2.8. And the annual percentage increase now is at 22.
Excellent. Much in your investment report?
Yes, the final report, report is the investment report for, um, and I'm going to use my injury as an excuse along with the audit, not had time to compile earnings information. I will tell you, I'm probably just going to have to do that in summary format, we can't get it by investment here, but I will, I want you to be aware, just like Ms. Cox had said, program or in her presentation, that a lot of these are fair value estimates and they change every month, just with the market. So I will show you what has been true, well as any net, and that will fluctuate from year to year, a lot of these investments, long-term, five years or so, but, um, I will try to get that for you.
On the, um, for example, the first section, uh, under general fund, LPL, there's a couple that the maturity date has passed, is, did they automatically roll over?
I noticed that, we just need to update it.
Okay.
If, if they do, um, mature, they go into that money market number, you'll see a lot of times at the bottom, automatically rolling there, and, and right now, I have not been reinvesting anything.
Oh, love.
I'm going to lock in five-year rate at a percent.
Exactly.
So, um, watching that.
Very good, very good. You've got some great rates on here and, um, that's a good job.
COVID.
No, but, those are, those are very, very good, very good. Do you have any questions or comments on any of these reports? Having none, we will accept all of these as information. Do we have any, um, other comment, public comment participation for this committee? Being none, uh...
Yes, you have one item.
Johnson, would you like to talk about that?
Uh, you can just move it straight to executive session for the full board if you'd like, it's just the contract for, um, it's the, it's the COLI increases for the contract employees.
Oh, yes, let's, um...
Uh, move it to...
Moved full board. So moved, all right, any other items for this committee? Seeing none, we will adjourn and come back in, or keep rolling, all right?
The order to Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for December 8th. Invitation and pledge already. If I could, can I?
Question to accept the, uh, minutes of the previous meeting?
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, one item, Mr. Chairman, just bring it to your attention, uh, on the agenda itself, you are not showing an I-1C7, although there is an I-1C7 item, so just make that adjustment to the agenda. That item is, uh, bid number 2020036, bid 3313 for Flow Wells Road. Again, it's, it's in your packet, it's just not showing on the actual agenda, I don't believe, on the software. Not showing on mine.
On the printed one, it did.
Correct.
Okay. Right into the business. Lotner, you have?
I do, thank you, sir. The City of Harlem's reached out to us concerning an easement across some county property. Uh, they're looking to run a sewer line to connect a subdivision to their sewer system. To do so, they needed to cross county property, it's right along a power line easement as well. Uh, we have looked at it, staff's recommend approval of that easement.
I wasn't pushing it hard enough. That's unusual for me, usually I push pretty hard. After your consideration, the first item is a, uh, engineering proposal from Ternipsi, uh, for our, uh, campus at the, what are you, servicing? Item we have in our general operating budget, proposal is for a lump sum of $32,000, we think it's going to be right at around $500,000 to get, because it's not just a matter of overlaying, there's, you've got to dig up and firm up the base because it's not doing well. We would recommend that engineering proposal, that item out for bid.
I'm sorry, motion to...
So moved.
Believe it or not, I was here in December of 1980, but they didn't ask my opinion about this, uh, uh, water wholesale water agreement, Harlem at that time. I was here, it was a 40-year agreement, I saw that and I said, "Well, I won't be here when that thing expires," but look at where I sit. It actually desp, expires this month, but I don't think we've come, I know there's been negotiations, Harlem, for renewal of that agreement. Uh, a resolution has not been breached, and so we would recommend a three-month, that agreement, both parties at chance.
Uh, just to let you know that I am meeting with their consultant, who's also serving as their interim manager today, at 11:30, if we, uh, I'm going to meet with him today, and, and they're already talking about resolution, but I agree with, uh, Mr. Clayton's, um, recommendation here, just to extend this for three months, I believe we can work out the terms in three months.
An agenda or does it have to go to?
Uh, it could go to the consent agenda.
I think it was back in August, we entered into a agreement with Blue Water, sewer relocation on the Kelly Sewer Line, uh, and as we got out there and started boots on the ground and looking at it real hard, we come to a realization that if we did that, only that 1,000 feet. Am I still here? Oh, okay. That we might be wasting some money, uh, and we would need the 2,000 feet to make sure that thing is stable, and we've gotten it out of the way of the erosion of the creek that's in there. All for many, many... Asked for a uh, proposal from Blue Water, and they gave us one for an additional fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, that would bring a total of their. Up to forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We had five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this. Recommend increasing that budget up to seven hundred thousand.
Motion to consent.
I move.
First of November, we took bids uh, for the painting of our pipe galleries at our water treatment plants, both. Our Blanchard Plant and our Clark Hill Plant, and I don't know if y'all have seen those galleries, they are complex. Lot of pipes and bolts and valves in those galleries, and of course, those bolts are starting to case somewhat. So it's time to get a good paint job on those. Uh, the low bid for the painting part of that contract was Mansfield, out of Augusta. Uh, they were the only bidder, at eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. I talked to the engineers about it, and they felt very comfortable both with the bid and with the company, so we. That bid. On the second bid, uh, it was for the replacement of doors and windows and tiles and bathroom fixtures. Uh, kind of upgrade at both plants. Have to go back in and then do these kinds of things. Low bid we got on that, and I think we had like three bidders on that, was uh, Jar Walden out of Augusta, for a low bid of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Total for both of these. One million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand and seventeen dollars, we actually budgeted one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion to consent.
I move.
Money today.
I saved you nothing.
Is that, is that how we're?
You do, thank you.
After your consideration, uh, easement, that, uh, the first one is from. Timberton. We would recommend acceptance.
And.
So move.
Second one is from Burton Carla Mall, and we recommend acceptance of that.
Motion to consent.
I move.
Next one is from. Dowsky, see, y'all didn't think I was gonna get that one, did you? And we would recommend acceptance of that.
Motion to consent.
Next one is from James Carey Jr. Recommend acceptance of that.
Motion to consent.
Last, last one is from a gentleman, Larry Price, I've heard that name before somewhere. Oh, he was a commissioner when I started here with Columbia.
Hand off on that.
That'll work.
He did, as a matter of fact. Uh, for a uh, is uh, giving us an encroachment agreement. Uh, and we would recommend acceptance of that encroachment agreement.
Motion to consent.
Mr. Thomas, I believe you're up.
Sir, good morning. Uh, the first item we have for your consideration is a bid for the Columbia County Wayfinding and Signage System Phase One. A bids were recently opened, uh, phase one includes wayfinding and signage upgrades throughout the county. Apppling, Evans, Martinez. Uh, Evans, uh, the lowest, most responsive bidder was Environmental Graphics Group in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Staff recommends approval to enter in the contract with Environmental Graphics Group for phase one of the project.
Finally.
I was, I've been working on this since I was on the CBB, it seems like forever ago, but it's been several years in the making, very excited to see this finally coming to fruition. Motion.
Little better deal than you thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
This is phase one.
All part.
I move.
The uh, next item we have is for the acceptance of improvements for Crawford Creek Section Eight and Smith Oaks Section One. Said improvements for Crawford Creek Section Eight include road, stormwater, sanitary sewer system, improvements along with the rights of way and easement. Uh, said improvements for Smith Oaks. Section One include the road, storm, along with rights of way and easements associated with these improvements. Staff recommends acceptance of improvements contention upon staff's approval of the final plat. As-built and warranty deed with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawings.
Is there anything unusual or controversial about these items?
No, ma'am.
Motion to consent.
The next item we have is for the acceptance of right-of-way from Riverwood Plantation Homeowners Association. For the forty-eight foot uh, right-of, right-of-way for Kavanaugh Lane, it's a small uh, roadway in Riverwood that uh, the county currently does not uh, oversee the right-of-way. So we have uh, had staff go out and inspect this. Uh, this right-of-way will include the road along with the rights of way and easements. Associated with these improvements, uh, staff recommends acceptance of the right-of-way Kavanaugh Lane.
Motion to consent.
Next, we have the acceptance of improvements for Whispering Pines, Section Four A. Uh, improvements include the road, stormwater, and sanitary sewer system, systems along with the rights of way, easements. Associated with these improvements, uh, staff recommends acceptance of improvements contention upon staff's approval of the final plat. As-built and warranty deed with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the drawings.
Motion to consent.
I move.
The next item we have for you is the twenty-twenty-one L-MIG, or Local Maintenance Improvement Grant Application. Uh, the application is due February first, twenty-twenty-one, uh, based on state formula. Our allocation will be. One, uh, a little over one point five million, as shown on your agenda item. There's also a ten percent match required. Um, staff has compiled a, a priority list, uh, this is not all the, the, the roads on the list that need to be improved, but this. Um, is greater than the allocation and the ten percent match, um. All of these will be for resurfacing and rehab. Uh, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the list presented and authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute all the documents necessary for grant.
The L-MIG is G-dot funds. They just tell us, here's about how much you're gonna have, and we submit a list.
Correct. That's correct.
That's correct. Percentage of road mileage?
This is, it's based on a large formula, based on centerline road miles, population is divvied out to every county, municipality. Again, like Mr. Titus stated, we have one point five million dollars, and we have to match ten percent, so another one hundred and fifty thousand we have to put on top of it. So this is just an application to get that one point five million dollars. They do ask what roads we're gonna spend that money on, so we're gonna show them these roads. We have a lot more roads we're gonna do, but we'll bring that to you as a separate item next year to approve the actual paving of many, many roads.
That are already funded and another funding source.
So when will the check come to us?
I would say probably thirty to sixty days after the Chairman signs the application.
Then, can we do it to consent? Motion to consent.
I move.
Okay, next, we have proposed safety lighting for Uchi Creek Greenway at Canterbury Farms Crosswalk. We had a resident concerned about some safety issues at this crosswalk, we had staff look into it, and uh, believe a safety light is warranted here. Um, this will improve the safety at the, the crosswalk, the Uchi Creek Greenway Crosswalk at Canterbury Farms. Reached out to Georgia Power, the upfront pole cost would be two thousand dollars. The annual cost of three hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty cents, staff recommends approval. Georgia Power to install a safety light on the new pole and bill the county accordingly.
Safety light, I mean, there's a light bulb on a pole, or is this chain, it's flashing lights?
The light on the pole, street light.
Motion to consent.
I move.
Okay, the last item we have is for the bid on Flowing Wells Road Widening Phase Two, uh, with Beam's Contracting. Bids were re- recently received. For the Flowing Wells Road Widening Phase Two, uh, and were open December third. Uh, Beam's Contracting, uh, was the most responsive, was the lowest, most responsive bidder, we believe, at eight million, six hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. We are still reviewing the bids and tabulating uh, the bids, making sure all the bonds are in place. Uh, staff recommends moving this item to the debate agenda at full commission, uh, to allow staff time to complete our review and verify bids, bonds, et cetera.
Motion to debate.
Move that on to debate then. Staff report.
Listen, Mr. Chairman, is. Running around forty-one, forty-two. Our expenditure. Running about what it's supposed. Take with it our budget.
Clayton, are people, um, do you have a lot of residents who are behind on their water bill due to COVID or? On me or any?
We have the same ones, and COVID, non-COVID. They don't pay until you shut them down, whatever reason. Most of them we know by name.
So there's not a big COVID-related swell of folks behind, that's good.
And of course. I didn't get called. Have your uh, construction project report. Active in the last month. The work performed. Right behind that.
Mission or, or public comment? One executive session item, and uh, Mr. Clayton, I'd love for you to handle this. Me instead of this.
No, sir. That's a negative session, I can't say that.
You had a trick on this one, didn't you?
Um, let's move this one to full, full.
Thank you very much.
Long as it's spelled correctly.
Right. We will adjourn at nine thirty-two.
Yeah.
All right.
Good morning, everyone, we'll call this meeting of the Community Emergency Services Committee, uh, to order at nine thirty-seven. Uh, we dispense with uh, called order invocation pledge. Uh, Mr. Allen and I are here. Mr. Allen, this, this must be the last Tuesday morning you have to endure assault, right? Last Tuesday morning?
It is, this is my last committee.
Well, I'll add my thanks to you, you've always been a man to emulate. Uh, are any additions to the agenda?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman.
Stans, aren't any presentations?
No, sir.
There being none. Uh, looks like we're going right into debate agenda. And unfinished business, I think Mr. Luton, you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you. First item for your consideration is a tabled item, uh, from last month for the agreement with the Wooden Partners to develop a five-to-ten-year master plan for parks, recreation, and events. Um, again, just the highlights, this is a, a ten-year roadmap for us to assess where we are, where we're going, and how to get there. Uh, through, it uses extensive community involvement, needs assessment survey, financial analysis, level of service standards, and a strategic action plan. So staff is asking for um, recommending approval of this contract. Phase one of the contract, which includes tasks one through three, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the full amount of the contract is two hundred and eight thousand, but we're just, we're asking for the uh, phase one approval today of, of eighty thousand dollars.
Questions about this? Uh, so for today, approval of phase one, and the remainder going to debate agenda, is that right, Mr. Johnson?
That is correct, the way the contract is written, it expires in June, those tasks, one through three, take us up till June, so we would ask for the uh, Those tasks, one through three, take us up till June, so we would ask for the, uh, next amount to cover phases two and three in the next budget year.
All right.
If.
We'll have a sample and a, and a plan in the first, in the, after the first installment.
For further understanding and discussion, I'd like to move this to debate.
So moved. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could just interject, and I appreciate that, and we're, I think we're good there. Do you mind going back and revisiting the, the top of the agenda to get the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting? I believe we might have skipped past.
Oh, my error, forgive me. Uh, looking at the, uh, the minutes from previous meeting, Mr. Allen?
Yes, I, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, all right, so moved.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, the next few items, uh, relate to the Performing Arts Center. I'm gonna ask Mr. Jameson to step up in case you have any questions after I present them. The, the first item is the facility use agreement for the venue. Uh, as you can see in the attached stack, staff recommends approval of the facility use agreement. Any questions, sir?
Done. I, I didn't know if you were gonna give me, but that's fine. No, I have no questions, actually, I understand it. Uh, we're basically, uh, we've, we've reviewed similar venues and facilities around state.
We have, yeah.
Around the country, the region, yeah.
Yeah, both regionally, locally, um, and on a state level, um, and some on a, on a more national level as well. Um, this would be a standard agreement, uh, to start getting shows booked and in the facility.
Fantastic. To consent.
All right, so moved, move to consent.
Thank you. Next item is, is for the venue management software called Ungerbach. See the long list of, of, um, services that it includes there. It is a, a specialized software for venues of this type. Staff recommends contracting with Ungerbach software in the amount of $26,000 upfront cost and then $14,500 annual, uh, cost for subsequent years, pending final review of the agreement from the county attorney.
What is the note here that this item was pulled during approval of the agenda? That previous, it brought. Okay, so it was brought, okay, I just wondered where that was. It's just, again, it's a unique CRM specifically for this kind of, of operation. I think I, I was in a meeting where you briefly went through that a little bit about how it tracks people that buy for events and you can.
Right, right. This is actually for the booking side of it. So this is how we will track the people that rent the facility, uh, whether it's a show, banquet, you name it. Um, this is where we will track that. This, this program also, one of the primary purposes is it houses the master calendar for the facility. So we can look at all the individual areas in the building, we can look at their usage, we can look at number of hours that they're being used, um, number of days they're being used, revenue against those spaces, um, so that we can start to gain all of that information and knowledge about what are those primary spaces. Uh, we will also use this to, uh, the, the contract, um, or, or the license agreement will be loaded into this program. We'll use this program to send out quotes, um, for booking the facility when people are interested in those and putting together the agreements. Um, it'll house all of the information, you know, if, if they need additional tables and chairs or all of that information that we need to run the events themselves, this program, uh, does that.
Does, does the Ungerbach work with, in any way overlap? I understand it's its own standalone. Does it, does it in any way overlap with any existing databases we have in our, our department or completely by itself for this role?
It is by itself, but it, but let me caveat that it, what, what's more important is that, that it has the ability to interface eventually with the ticketing system, which I think it will. Um, but this is a, for, for what he's trying to do, it's very, very specialized and as such, this is very specialized software. But having said that, um, the cost that it comes in at.
Yeah.
Very reasonable.
Yes, it is.
Software that is specialized. So I think the, the important thing down the road is looking at the integration of the ticketing system beyond that. I think you'll, I, I don't think there's an outstanding requirement for it to integrate with anything else.
Right. That was, that was actually the main thing I was, I was, when I originally asked about this, whether this was going to be a ticketing system as well, but as long as we're looking down the road, it.
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you. Uh, that being the understanding, I'll move to consent.
Yeah, so moved, sir. Thank you, sir.
Uh, next item is resolution number 2044, the fee schedule, establishing a fee schedule for the Performing Arts Center and authorizing the general manager, uh, to negotiate on behalf of Columbia County, uh, rental fees. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Consent.
We're asking this to go to debate.
Oh, this has to go, he has a fee schedule, sorry, it does. We're actually move to debate.
All right, move to debate, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final item is, uh, acceptance of the, uh, resurfacing bid for the Evans Sound Center Park Playground. Uh, if you remember, a, a couple months ago, we rejected the bid. We had one single bidder come in, so we, uh, tweaked a couple things and sent it back out. We got three bidders this time and ultimately the lowest came in about 10, 11, 10 or 11,000 dollars lower than the, the first bid. So, uh, the surface out at Evans Sound Center Park takes a pounding, a, as you can imagine, it's in pretty rough shape, uh, probably going on about 10 years old. A lot of loose rubber particles going everywhere. This would give us a much more durable, longer-lasting, higher-end surface, and I, I think it's much needed out there. Staff would recommend approval, uh, utilizing 11, uh, excuse me, $84,000 of park, 11 to 16 park upgrade funds and $71,518.15 out of 11 to 16 recreation discretionary funds. For a total of 1,000, or 155,518.
50 cents.
Please continue, yes, so moved, appreciate you seeking the lower bid, and thank you, sir. Yeah, of. No additional items, sir? Mr. Driver? Thank you, sir. No, no legal matters before us. We have, uh, staff reports.
Keith, do you have anything or?
I have my usual, uh, response and budget reports for your information.
Questions, sir?
We have any commissioner, uh, comments or participation? And nothing for executive session? There being none, we'll adjourn this meeting at 9:47 AM.
Let's round it off to three minutes at 9:50. That was much better than what I was thinking. Stretch their legs.
Just getting out of hand here, come on.
Is this, uh, is this your last committee meeting, Mr. Chairman?
This is my last committee meeting. I'll have order.
Can't handle the truth.
Uh, it is my last committee meeting and I'm, I'm proud to call to order the Proposed Development Planning Services Committee, uh, for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, the last committee meeting of the year and the last committee meeting for me as sitting commissioner. Um, having already had the invocation, pledge of allegiance, dispensed with those, uh, we quorum two out of three members present, I'll have approval of the minutes of the November meeting.
Move to approve them, sir?
Approved. Uh, anything on the agenda that we need to add?
Not at my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, we have no presentations, pre-lined agenda, we'll move straight into debate and new business.
I'd like to ask Mr. Prather to come up and present these first two items to you.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
The first item we have up for your consideration is the, uh, relighting of the main hall and library, uh, lobby and main hall in the, uh, Evans Library. These are some aging fixtures that, uh, maintenance has replaced bulbs on, they're different colors, uh, they're been pulled with and some of them are not working, but me and John Luton, the process of going through that building determined these need to be replaced. Um, in the evening hours, it's very dark in that hall, so I am, uh, asking for 30 new light fixtures to be replaced by Brian Electric in the amount of $69,500.
Thoughts, sir? Move to consent, sir?
Second.
Second item up for your consideration is the re-roofing of the Columbia County Detention Center. Um, we have, uh, walked that roof many times. There are the old jail, the new jail, some newer pods, all of which have different roofing systems, uh, different heights, uh, different ages of these roofs. Um, the sheriff has noted that ongoing leaks at his facility, so we've come in and done an analysis. Um, we are asking to award the re-roofing of this campus to SRS out of Griffin, Georgia in the amount of $1,116,000. Project should be complete within 90 days, um, and this will provide him a new high-quality PVC roof with fiber, um, that has a good warranty and I think will, will last him a good.
This, this was originally in the, this was planned for, this was in our budget discussions with the sheriff, is this what we were expecting or?
Actually, let's more, I, let, let Matt have that. We, we've been back and forth with this a lot and been trying to figure out a way to fund this, but quit, Matt.
So we, uh, the sheriff did come in with his request during last budget year a, as part of his general budget and we were able to find some, uh, unallocated interest money, some sploss money. We had budgeted a million dollars for that. Um, the first bid came in, I think, 1.5 million. Mr. Prather did a really good job of, of rethinking this, I think, and Mr. Scarborough worked with him. They came up with a new idea and they got the cost down by $400,000. We are asking to throw an additional $116,000 of unallocated interest at this project to.
Okay.
It looked like an adequate bid process, uh, there, given the amount, is, uh, is there any problem with sending this, uh, to debate?
Yes, sir.
Just given the amount, so everybody can have, have a look at it, certainly, certainly needs to be done, I don't, I just.
I've personally worked with SRS in past projects and.
Move to full body. Move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prather. Um, now down to development.
All right, first item we have is alcohol beverage license for cattle walkers, uh, LTD. And this is a change of ownership, uh, the new app, the new owner has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirit for on-premise consumption. It's 106 A Davis Road. They have provided all the information and have, uh, posted the property. Staff recommends approval of the licensing effective January 1st, 2021.
Now realize they changed ownership?
Move to consent, I didn't know they were still open.
Second. Anything else regarding business? Got it, none? Legal matters. But you're so festive today, I just figured you were, you were dressed up for a reason.
All right, seeing none, staff reports, development services.
All right, the first one we have is the November 2019, 2020 report, a copy of that is attached for your information, no further action is required. Answer any questions?
Are surpassing last year in all categories now, huh?
Or, and anymore.
All.
Coming next month or this month as well. All right, the next one we have is the, uh, November 2020 Development Financial Report, a copy of that is attached for your information and no further action is required. And the last one we have is a temporary alcohol, uh, permits for November 2020, a copy of that is also attached.
Ready, sir? Take that for information?
Questions?
No, sir.
All right, commissioner, public comments? Anything from the commissioner? Anything from the public? Seeing none, uh, we have no executive session, so at 9:56, I will adjourn my final committee meeting. And adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.